Good evening. The hour of 6:00 PM having arrived, I'll call to order the special meeting of the Keene City Council. It is my honor and my privilege to announce that Jay Khan is present to take the oath of office of Mayor of the City of Keene. I would ask that Mr. Khan come forward. I would also recognize our former mayor, George Hansel, to come forward to present the gavel at the appropriate time. So, sirs, if you'll come forward. Counselor Greenwald, I understand as your JP, you're going to be administering the oath to our mayor, and if you'll please join him at the table.
It's probably one of the greater honors that I've had to administer the oath to my good friend, Dr. Jay Khan. I'm a New Hampshire Justice of the Peace, so I can legally do this.
It has been checked.
It has been checked.
Anyone want to get married?
No. Dr. Khan, would you raise your hand, right hand, and solemnly swear? I, J V Khan...
I, J V Khan...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
To the United States of America...
To the United States of America...
State of New Hampshire...
State of New Hampshire...
And will support the constitutions thereof...
And will support the constitutions thereof...
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
And perform all duties incumbent on me as mayor...
And perform all duties incumbent on me as mayor...
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities...
And agreeably to the rules and regulations...
And agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Of the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire...
Of the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire...
And the city of Keene...
And the city of Keene...
This I do under pains and penalties of perjury.
This I do under pains and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
I feel like the ring bearer at a wedding. But here, Jay, I wish you all the success you can achieve. I know you're going to do a great job and take care of our city, and here's your gavel. I hope that you use it well, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
George, thank you very much. Mayor is a title you'll carry for life and an honor that the city has bestowed upon you. Thank you so much for your service. Thanks so much for helping me in the transition. Appreciate it.
It's a pleasure.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll of councilors-elect?
These councils were elected at our November election, and they include Laura E. Tobin, Edward J. Haas, Kate M. Bosley, Michael J. Remy, Randy L. Filio, Robert C. Williams, Raleigh C. Omerod, Brian J. Lake, Bettina A. Chadbourne, Thomas F. Powers.
Attorney Burke, Justice Burke, would you please come forward and administer the oath of office to the councilors-elect? Would you please come to the microphone in the order in which your names were called?
Starting with Laura J. Tobin.
I, Laura Tobin... Do solemnly affirm... Do solemnly affirm... That I will bear faith and true allegiance... That I will bear faith and true allegiance... The United States of America and the state of New Hampshire. To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire. And will support the constitutions thereof... And will support the constitutions thereof... That I will faithfully and impartially discharge... That I will faithfully and impartially discharge... And perform all the duties incumbent upon me... And perform all the duties incumbent upon me... As Ward Four Counselor. As Ward Four Counselor. According to the best of my abilities... According to the best of my abilities... Agreeably to the rules and regulations... Agreeably to the rules and regulations... Of the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire... According to the laws and the... Constitution... Constitution of the United... State of New Hampshire... State of New Hampshire... And the city of Keene. And the city of Keene. This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury. This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury. Congratulations. Thank you.
Counselor?
Oh, yes.
A gift of the city... Oh, my dear. A gift of the city... It is the city seal that all the councilors wear to the meetings. Congratulations.
Evening.
Good evening.
Please raise your right hand. I...
I, Edward Haas...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the constitutions thereof...
And will support the constitutions thereof...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform...
Discharge and perform...
All the duties incumbent on me as counselor-at-large.
All the duties incumbent upon me as counselor-at-large.
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Of the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire...
To the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire...
And the city of Keene.
And the city of Keene.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Counselor, and to you as well. A gift of the city of Keene. It's the seal to wear at official occasions in council meetings. Congratulations, Counselor.
Thank you.
Kate Bosley.
Please raise your right hand. I...
I, Kate Bosley...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the constitutions thereof...
And will support the constitutions thereof...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform...
Discharge and perform...
All the duties incumbent on me...
All of the duties incumbent upon me...
As counselor-at-large.
As counselor-at-large.
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Of the Constitution and laws...
Of the Constitution and laws...
Of the state of New Hampshire...
Of the state of New Hampshire...
And the city of Keene.
And the city of Keene.
This I do under pains and penalties of perjury.
This I do under pains and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Counselor Bosley. Michael J. Remy.
Please raise your right hand. I, in your name...
I, Michael Remy...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the constitutions thereof...
And will support the constitutions thereof...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform...
Discharge and perform...
All the duties incumbent on me...
All the duties incumbent on me...
As counselor-at-large.
As counselor-at-large.
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Of the Constitution and laws...
Of the Constitution and laws...
Of the state of New Hampshire and the city of Keene.
Of the state of New Hampshire and the city of Keene.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Counselor. Randy Filio.
Please raise your right hand. I...
I, Randy L. Filio...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
The United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the constitutions thereof...
And will support the constitutions thereof...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform...
Discharge and perform...
All the duties incumbent on me...
All the duties incumbent on me...
As counselor-at-large.
As counselor-at-large.
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Of the Constitution and laws...
Of the Constitution and laws...
Of the state of New Hampshire and the city of Keene.
Of the state of New Hampshire and the city of Keene.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
This I do under the pains and penalty of perjury.
That's pretty quick.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Robert C. Williams.
I... Please raise your right hand. I...
I, Robert Crane Williams...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the constitutions thereof...
And will support the constitutions thereof...
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
All the duties incumbent on me...
All the duties incumbent on me...
As Ward Two Counselor.
And Ward Two Counselor.
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Of the Constitution and laws...
Of the Constitution and laws...
Of the state of New Hampshire and the city of Keene.
Of the state of New Hampshire and the city of Keene.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations, Your High Councilor.
Congratulations, Counselor Williams. Raleigh Omerod.
Please raise your right hand. I...
I, Raleigh C. Omerod...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the constitutions thereof...
And will support the constitutions thereof...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform all the duties...
Discharge and perform all the duties...
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me...
As Ward One Counselor.
As Ward One Counselor.
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Of the Constitution and laws...
Of the Constitution and laws...
Of the state of New Hampshire and the city of Keene.
Of the state of New Hampshire and the city of Keene.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations.
Brian J. Lake.
If you raise your right hand. I...
I, Brian Lake...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
And I will support the constitutions thereof...
And I will support the constitutions thereof...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge all the duties incumbent on me...
Discharge all the duties incumbent on me...
As Ward Three Counselor.
As Ward Three Counselor.
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Of the Constitution and laws...
Of the Constitution and laws...
Of the state of New Hampshire and the city of Keene.
Of the state of New Hampshire and the city of Keene.
And this I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Counselor. Bettina Chadbourne.
Please raise your right hand. I...
I, Bettina Chadbourne...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
To the United States of America and to the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the constitutions thereof...
And will support the constitutions thereof...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me...
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me...
As counselor-at-large.
As counselor-at-large.
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Of the Constitution and laws...
Of the Constitution and laws...
Of the state of New Hampshire and the city of Keene.
Of the state of New Hampshire and the city of Keene.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury. Thank you. Oh.
Thomas Powers.
Short memory, I'll keep this right. I know you need it. I, in your name...
I, Thomas Powers...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
That I will bear faith and true allegiance...
To the United States of America...
To the United States of America...
And the state of New Hampshire.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the constitutions thereof...
And will support the constitution thereof...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform...
Discharge and perform...
All the duties incumbent on me...
All the duties incumbent upon me...
As Ward Five Counselor.
As Ward Five Counselor.
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my ability...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Agreeably to the rules and regulations...
Of the Constitution and laws...
Of the Constitution and laws...
Of the state of New Hampshire...
Of the state of New Hampshire...
And the city of Keene.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury. This I do under the pains and... Pains and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations, Counselor.
Thank you, Your High Councilor.
Congratulations, Counselor. And Counselor Burke, thank you very much for your assistance this evening. Appreciate it very much. Ed Burke has served this community a long, long time on the bench, and we appreciate his service. Clerk, would you please call the roll of the 2024-2025 City Council?
My pleasure. Kate M. Bosley...
Here.
Laura E. Tobin...
Here.
Michael J. Remy...
Here.
Randy L. Filio...
Here.
Robert C. Williams...
Here.
Edward J. Haas...
Here.
Philip M. Jones...
Present.
Andrew M. Madison...
Here.
Chris E. Roberts... Raleigh C. Omerod...
Present.
Brian J. Lake...
Here.
Catherine I. Workman...
Here.
Bettina A. Chadbourne...
Here.
Thomas F. Powers...
Here.
And Mitchell H. Greenwald...
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to invite... There are a couple of chairs, I think, over in the corner, so if there are folks that do want a seat, I'm sure we can rearrange over there. Next, I'd like to ask Rabbi Dan Aronson to join us and provide an invocation to the
Honorable Mayor Khan Mazel Tov. Thank you for inviting me to offer this invocation. Mayor Khan, councilors, distinguished guests, we gather today on the traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennecook, and Wabanaki peoples, past and present, in gratitude for our elected officials and civil servants who have risen to answer the call of public service. I offer these words inspired by the wisdom of Unitarian Universalist Minister John Saxon and the second-century Jewish sage Shimon Ben-Zoma. Please rise and let us pray. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead this community in which we love, live, and work, and play. Grant our newly-installed mayor and city councilors all they need to govern effectively and justly. Remind them that the One who is wise learns from everyone; the One who is strong practices restraint; the One who is rich is content with one's lot; and the One who is honored honors others. As they debate the issues of our day, may they seek to learn from others, question their impulses, comport themselves with humility, and treat one another and those who come before them with dignity and respect. Remind them that no matter where we live, everyone, gay, straight, transgender, black or white, Hispanic or Asian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, Sikh or atheist, is our neighbor, our sibling, and that through the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the most vulnerable among us: our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. We pray in the name of the holy and sacred, the transcendent and the imminent, that the work of their hands and the work of all our hands together shall prosper, and we say, "Ame."
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Shrohan Budakoti to come forward. Shrohan was the 2022 mayor for a day in Keene. He's grown a little bit since then. But Shrohan, thank you. Would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Shrohan.
I'm sure you've all been waiting for this inaugural address. Thank you very much. And thank you for helping fill the room tonight. It's great to see friends and neighbors, people from Keene that I've known for a long time, and even some guests from outside of Keene, so thank you. So, a not-so-funny thing happened to me on the way to the forum. COVID caught me. But after some quick footwork by our city staff, we're finally holding our 2024 City Council inaugural ceremony. In my 35 years in Keene, there have been eight mayors and only three city managers. The continuity of city leadership over that time has been preserved by our city's professional staff, and I want to thank them for their service, their professionalism, and their dedication. I also want to extend my appreciation for the services provided by the city's 350 employees, 100 of whom are part-time, seasonal. Nonetheless, it's because of the city staff that Keene residents benefit from the quality of services in the city. And as I begin to lay out some of the challenges and opportunities that we, as a city council, will face over the next couple of years, the first priority I recognize is retaining our city's charter officers and retaining them, the city manager, the attorney, the clerk, the treasurer, and supporting their staff from Public Works to Police and Fire to Parks and Recreation to Finance, Library, and Human Services. We need to support them in ensuring that the city has the talent needed to sustain the city's services. Having recently served in state government, I know this is not just a simple challenge. Government at all levels is facing staffing challenges now and for the coming years. And while recognizing staff, I want to thank our city clerk, Patty Little, and the entire clerk's office staff for their efforts bringing us to this day. Administering an election process takes an enormous coordination, as does preparing a seat. As... It's... Yes. So, it's my opportunity today to broadcast your advertisement, to ask the public to support our well-run elections by volunteering to assist this clerk's office in administering the upcoming presidential primary election. As the first-in-the-nation primary election state, we need to demonstrate that nobody does elections better than we do in New Hampshire. So, since retiring from Keene State College, where I worked for 27 years as vice president and a year as interim president, I've served on the city council and in the state senate. And through these elective roles, I've gained the experience of being a legislator, working on public policy, and developing the personal relationships that go into public policy work. Those are the kinds of experiences, I think, including my 35 years in Keene, that will help me as an incoming mayor. However, in the run-up to this day, one of the things I recognize, which I'm sure my mayoral predecessors did as well, is there is only one mayor. And that kind of sends a little wave through you. But having served three terms in New Hampshire Senate, inevitably, one of the things that people will ask me, what are my perceived differences? I reply that, most notably, there is no political caucus, there are no partisan divides, and there are no geographic differences. All of us who are serving on the city council that are serving on the council live in the same community. We are a more heterogeneous group because we're made up of self-employed and mid-career professionals, business owners, retirees, local high school graduates and college graduates, local community volunteers. We live, play, and work, as the rabbi said, in the same community, and that is what makes local government distinct and most impactful on people's lives. And I believe that we, as a city council, are united in a mission to make our community keen more successful in the future than we've been in the past. And working together, councilors, staff, and citizens, we can meet that obligation. This past week, we learned of the passing of one of our past mayors, Jim Ossillo. Jim, if you knew him, Jim was a big man with a big personality, and no doubt he served the city of Keene well. I didn't know Jim well enough to tell stories about him, but I did know one of his predecessors, Bob Mallett, very well. Bob was the mayor of Keene from 1962 to 1966. You can say aye to Bob on the way out the door. And during Bob's time as mayor, Keene was designated as an all-American city, a point of distinction that he pointed out throughout his career. Bob served Keene State College long enough and well enough that he rose to be a vice president for Resource Administration prior to my arrival. I was recruited to Keene State as a candidate for vice president for finance and planning in 1988, and Bob was on the search committee through which I was recommended. Inevitably, our roles, Bob's and mine, would overlap, and when Bob retired, his functions passed over to me. But for six years, Bob and I, we served the college together. Bob's favorite term when he faced a problem was "bullet jam." When Bob played football at Keene High School, he was the blocking bull in Bull and Jam. Bob was a big personality like Jim Ossillo, and Bob could be a bull. In my first six months on the job, when Bob would introduce me at events, he'd say, "Meet Jay Khan," our vice president for finance and planning. And it would annoy me that he'd always mispronounce my name. So, around the holiday season, I finally got to meet Bob's family. We were at the president's residence, and Bob introduced Cheryl and me to his wife, Norma. And I finally understood something about Bob's Boston accent, because I always called Norma, by the way your name was spelled, Norma. I've learned a lot about New England and New Hampshire over my 35 years in Keene. Grand Staters are resilient, independent, persistent, frugal, and witty. I cover at least four of those five. We are equally a region with people born here and those who moved here to enjoy a lifestyle that, in spite of progress made over time, remains unique, represented by a love of history, innovation, and the great outdoors. And thank you to Dan White, Keene resident, whose Menadnock film recently reminded me of our region's past and what we cherish most about living in the Menadnock region. Something that comes from being responsible for planning is you appreciate futurists. And over the next two years, Keene will undertake a community master plan process that will guide the city's development into the 2030s. In that process, the city council will engage with a master plan committee, which is the function of the Keene Planning Board, supported by city community development staff and a specialized team of consultants. I assure the community that focused conversations and updates through our Planning Lands and Licenses Committee and in public forums will occur during that entire 18-month period. A master plan process, though, does not mean everything gets placed on hold. The city will continue finalizing its plans for the downtown renovation project and other projects that we have in the pipeline. Learning from the past, though, and led by the city's municipal services committee, citizens' focus groups will be consulted at many opportunities, and we'll begin that process at the municipal services January meeting with a schedule and progress update to which the community is invited to attend. We are a community that needs well-planned growth if we are going to sustain our quality of life. And if that's in doubt for you, consider that Keene faces more unfilled job openings than ever and an aging workforce with fewer younger-aged people to fill those jobs. The National Conference for State Legislatures recently published that for the second year in a row, the biggest issue in 2024 for state legislatures is workforce. Advances in workforce development take years to evolve, so we have no time to wait. Keeping talent in our community is a key strategy to plan population growth. That beginning, that begins with education leaders, thank you President Treadwell for being here tonight, but education leaders building work-based learning into their curriculum, and employers throughout our city creating incentives for students to explore work in their needed fields. It's not only high school students that need internships and work-based learning opportunities, it's college students as well. Many studies show that pre-graduation internships are the pathway that lead people living locally to fill local employment needs. For example, we can relate to the need for a more responsive mental health care system, and the state's approach includes more beds at the state hospital, but also a more responsive and better community-based services. We have input to the state hospital initiative through our elected state officials, Representative Jones. But the Keene community has the responsibility for assuring our community-based services are up to the task. For five years while I served in the state senate, I worked with Gary Barnes, who was then the executive director of MAPS Counseling Services, and Phil Weisick of Menadnock Family Services to lower the barriers to expanding mental health care access and the mental health care workforce in Keene. And one of those barriers was getting the state's Medicaid insurance companies to reimburse for clinical counseling services who counsel Medicaid recipients. We accomplished that. And because of Medicaid reimbursements, though, being so low, the current MAPS director, Gina Pasquale, tells me it takes up to 10 phone calls for a Medicaid patient to get an appointment, which is often weeks out from their point of need. However, because of that initiative, today, MAPS has three unpaid interns under the supervision of licensed councilors providing counseling, and six paid resident students who are providing mental health services to the region's most underserved populations. One of the past residents has been hired by MAPS as a full-time counselor, and that means we now have 10 new clinicians in our community. There's fruit on the tree, but the tree has a way to go before it's fully mature. But there are other examples of building our workforce within, from within. Call up Cheshire Medical Center, and you'll hear their call waiting script advertising the internships they're offering to prospective employees. The Keene Manufacturing Consortium, led by Mayor Hansel, recently wrote our Keene School District pleading the case for manufacturing internships being built into the Cheshire Career Center's curriculum. And one of the most high-impact learning practices used by liberal arts campuses like Keene State College is internships. And in our conversations about sustaining the college-city commission, President Treadwell and I agreed that it's important for the commission to work on building more internships with and around the city. And I won't give up on working on the idea of establishing a city youth council that promotes civic service and civic engagement in our youth before they graduate high school. So we can envision pathways to growing our own future workforce and engaged citizens, but at the same time, attracting talent from beyond our region in migration is a more competitive effort, and in some fields, in migration is necessary if we're going to fill our workforce needs. Inmigration has been a significant component of New Hampshire's growth over the past decade. The University of New Hampshire's demographer, Ken Johnson, published in this past October that a majority of New Hampshire's residents were not born in the state, but moved here from another state or country. That contrasts with the statistics for the nation overall and for every other New England state. This inmigration population is more diverse than New Hampshire's residents, adding another dimension to our growth objective: diversity. Inmigration residents need to find ways of bonding in our community with people similar to them. This means nurturing organizations that support diverse populations, be they ethnic, religious, age, or gender-based organizations. And then we need to make certain we're building bridges across organizations so populations and support groups aren't siloed but are indeed welcomed. This role is played by the city's Human Rights Committee and the Menadnock Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Organization, groups that are important to a planned growth objective. A welcoming environment means we've planned well for hosting an inmigrating person or a family. Beyond offering competitive wages, we need to make sure and put some muscle behind the adopted city council goal of finding creative ways to make quality housing affordable and available as possible. The council goal calls for 230 new housing units. Now compare that to the Washington Park apartments. Washington Park added 135 new units when opened in 2019, and that single project increased the city's tax base by $13 million, making it the seventh-highest assessed property in the city of Keene. Not every housing project needs to be a four-story building in the center of the city. The city council's recent actions have improved housing opportunities and areas for accessory dwelling units, particularly in the more densely populated residential neighborhoods. And there are vacant properties throughout the city of Keene with nearby cities' supplied water and sewer that can accommodate multi-unit apartments and housing. There are also single-family homes, like on the east side of Keene, originally built for larger families which can be converted to apartments, and the city needs to take an active role in accelerating many types of additional housing opportunities. There are a lot of partners for workforce housing, including area employers who may want to provide housing to their workforces, like in some other cities, and we can form regional partnerships with surrounding communities like Swansea, where there exists more developable land and it's near Keene employers. So in other words, there's a lot the city can do to make, to address the needs and make room for additional people to live, work, and enjoy the entertainment and recreational opportunities that Keene offers. Now while the issues of planned growth, workforce development, and housing are on every agenda for all New Hampshire cities, New Hampshire cities also share issues of housing instability and homelessness. We know that these issues have co-determinants like substance use disorders, alcohol addiction, and violence-related trauma. We face holes in the delivery system, such as supportive services connected to recovery housing, and it takes funding to fill those holes and build those connected networks. I was reading this past week a story about Houston's Connected Support Network, and funding is the common factor to success. We need to partner with other New Hampshire cities and state government to make sure we're filling those gaps, that otherwise, people fall through and fail in their recovery efforts. And I began working on those links this past weekend, reaching out to newly-elected mayors so that we can team up in our funding requests initiatives. One thing that can set Keene apart is the pride we take in the accomplishments of our people and organizations. There's a collective responsibility to sharing our pride and accomplishments of our people and organizations, and with the council's support and indulgence, at every city council meeting for the remainder of 2024, and that would be our next 23 meetings, I'm asking all people living in Keene and working in Keene to share with the mayor and the city clerk, names of students, employees, volunteers, retirees, and organizations that we should recognize for their accomplishments. Those are stories, stories that we can amplify across New Hampshire and simultaneously promote our community. I'm so grateful to the citizens of Keene for giving me the honor of representing our city as its mayor. The mayor's role is defined as the ceremonial head of the city, and I assure you that at every ceremony, every city council meeting, and every day that I spend on city business in City Hall or in Concord or in visits across the state, I will articulate our vision and our accomplishments, our needs, and our creativity. Keene is a vital city for western New Hampshire and our state. Our future is full of expectations to which we must rise to meet. I often refer to quotes on education, and as I was looking across for one, it came from Malcolm X, in fact, and it says that "Tomorrow belongs to the people who prepare for it today." A good message for educators, a good message for us today. May we be blessed along our journey with success, good health, love, peace, understanding, and compassion in this new year and this new council term. Thank you very much. I would now like to ask the clerk to read Resolution 2024-01 relating to the city council's rules of order.
Thank you, Your Honor. And we do have Resolution R. 2024-01, a resolution relating to the city council's rules of order.
Counselor Bosley, for a motion, please.
A motion to adopt would be in order.
Motion to adopt the rules as presented.
Motion to adopt the rules as presented.
And Counselor Jones, second.
Second.
A roll call of two-thirds vote is necessary.
Counselor Bosley.
Yes.
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Omarad.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadborn.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
And we'll take up any kinds of changes to the rules of order at a subsequent city council meeting. Announcements of, would the clerk please read the announcements of the standing committee This is something the mayor gets to do and is in great suspense, but I think we've had some conversations about this. Clerk, please.
To the Municipal Services Facility and Infrastructure Committee, Mitchell H. Greenwald, Chair; Randy L. Filio, Vice Chair; Andrew Madison; Catherine I. Workman; Laura E. Tobin. To the Planning, Licenses, and Development Committee, Kate M. Bosley, Chair; Philip M. Jones, Vice Chair; Raleigh Omarad; Robert Williams; Edward J. Haas. To the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee, Thomas F. Powers, Chair; Michael J. Remy, Vice Chair; Bettina A. Chadborn; Brian J. Lake; Chrissy Roberts.
Thank you. I'd like now to invite Reverend Elsa Worth to come forward and to give us a closing benediction.
It's a unique honor to deliver the final blessing upon the inauguration of our new city leaders. Some of you are continuing in your terms and others are brand-new, including our mayor. And no matter how much experience you have, today marks a fresh start for this particular team, this configuration of leaders in 2024, and these are challenging times. And who knows what this year's will bring or what you might be called upon to do. We, the people of your city, will look for leadership, and courage, and vision, and compassion from all of you. So with these things in mind, let us pray. God, I ask your blessing on the members of the city council of Keene and upon our new mayor, not just this day, but in the days to come. Give them the wisdom to lead into the unknown, curiosity to seek to understand many differing points of view, ears to hear new voices, and eyes to see the big picture. Give them steadiness and respect for one another and their fellow citizens in times of conflict, and great creativity in their leadership. Open their minds and their hearts to the needs of all our citizens, particularly those unseen outside the center of our community and those who truly suffer on the edges of it. Help them to be builders of bridges rather than builders of walls, so that our city may grow in harmony rather than division. Bless them today and in the years ahead, and give them courage to face the reality of our times with compassion rather than competition, humility rather than pride, hope rather than fear, that through their leadership, we may better know the power of love in the city of Keene. Amen. Blessings on you all.
Thank you very much. There's a reason that Reverend Worth and Rabbi Aaronson have been asked multiple times to be part of the inauguration ceremonies, and I appreciate your wisdom and guidance and thoughts and prayers for us. Thank you very much. At this moment, I get to use this gavel for the first time. We are reaching a point of adjournment. For city councilors...
We'll do it afterwards.
Afterwards, okay. We have a meeting at 7 o'clock. We hopefully will conclude that by 7:45, so a non-public session can be held after that. But we'll have 10 minutes to meet and greet folks after this adjournment, and promptly at 7 o'clock, we'll start our city council meeting. Thank you very much for your attendance. We are adjourned.